Can I have a motion to call the regular business meeting to order, please? Mike, so moved, second. Thank you, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the quiet United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
All right, we don't need to make any adjustments to the agenda, so can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Charlie, so moved, second. Shanna, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six, nothing, because Carol's not here tonight. All right, our student liaisons, please come up.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Madame Rayton's AP French class and Frau McCann's AP German class visited the preschool classroom to share some foreign holiday traditions before the break. The French class sang Vive le Vent, the French version of Jingle Bells, while the German class recited a German Christmas poem and taught the preschoolers about Saint Nicholas. The preschoolers were thrilled to see that Saint Nicholas had dropped off some gifts for them. Thank you to everyone who contributed to our Warriors Giving Donation Drive. The International Club and National Art Honor Society worked together to sort the items after school. Hygiene products were given to the Willow Domestic Violence Center and the blankets and towels were delivered to Saint's Place. There were roughly 20 bags and boxes of donations. Warriors Giving was a great way to serve others during the holiday season and we cannot wait to do it again next year. The Warriors celebrated the week prior to winter break with a Spirit Week. Monday was comfy cozy day, Tuesday was classy Christmas, Wednesday was flannel day, and Thursday was warrior winter storm, a blew out. While we were sad to miss ugly sweater day, everyone was excited to start the holidays early thanks to the wind and freezing temperatures. Thank you to the PTSA for serving hot cocoa to the students in the hallway before class to make our Spirit Week extra special. Link Crew also hosted gingerbread decorating after school in the cafeteria. Another thank you to Mr. Eckler for DJing during lunches so everyone could sing along to their favorite holiday songs. Lastly, Mr. Eckler would like to notify the board members that his AP Government students that were eligible to vote participated in the recent bond vote. Congratulations to the 15 Warriors and Lakers that were honored as Democrat and Chronicles All-Greater Rochester selections for the fall season. We also congratulate our Fall Student Athletes for having their highest GPA in Schrader history, for having 13 First Team All-Greater Rochester athletes and coaches, and having 25 First Team All-League athletes. Now on to indoor track. Corinthia G made history by beating a 30-year-old school record for the triple jump. It is also currently the best jump in New York State. Additionally, Cam C is currently number one in the nation for her impressive performance in the high jump. Congratulations to both ladies for their stellar accomplishments and we wish the track team the best of luck in their upcoming meet. Winter sports are well underway. Martin Luther King Junior Day was a busy day for Schrader athletes as wrestling, Nordic skiing, Alpine skiing, and bowling all had matches. Good luck to all of the athletes who have games and matches this week. This past week, the International Club had their annual dinner where members prepared and brought an assortment of delicious foods from all over the world. It was a great opportunity to experience different cultures with friends. Members brought in foods ranging from samosas and fish cakes all the way to French cheeses and Italian cookies. It was a fun time and the International Club cannot wait to host another dinner next year. On Thursday, January 12th, the Math League had their fourth competition of the season. Students competed in categories consisting of arithmetic, analytic geometry of a straight line, polygons, logarithms, trig equations, and mind benders. It was a successful meet as 32 members participated earning a total of 67 points. Schrader was one of 22 schools that competed countywide, placing sixth in the county and third in their division. Congratulations to Jaclyn H for having a perfect category as well as earning double-digit scores. Well done to all who competed. Last week, Schrader welcomed the Spry eighth graders to our campus to learn about their many options for high school electives. Our Link Crew volunteers became tour guides for the day, leading groups of students around to explore facilities, hallways, and classrooms. The business, music, art, and technology teachers were all informative and personable, making the future high schoolers feel comfortable and confident about their choices. The tour ended in the auditorium where a couple of chosen Link Crew leaders participated in a panel discussion. They answered common questions from the eighth graders, providing great advice regarding classroom habits, extracurriculars, and elective choices. The event was a success and we are excited to welcome the eighth graders back to school as incoming freshmen next school year. The library is finally opening. Today, the Library Media Center was thrilled to welcome the seniors in for a soft opening. The official grand opening for all grades will be held on Thursday, January 19th, where Mrs. Streggy will provide a brief tour and set expectations for the brand-new space. The Schrader Courier has a student article written by Senior Hannah G about the new Schrader library that the community can take a look at along with other student-created content at wshscourier.org. The Courier has over 10 original articles from students this semester as well. On another note, the National Honor Society donated over $250 to the Galisano Children's Hospital from decorating and selling pens. National Honor Society also wrote over 150 holiday cards to the residents of the Highlands at Brighton Nursing Home. That is all for this month, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. As we've headed into 2023, the Titans have started off our new year well. Before we went on break, Thomas had many exciting events going on. The Winter Break Spirit Week was a great success that our students loved. Throughout the week, the Student Council set up a table outside of the cafeterias where students could learn to make a snowflake that would then be used to decorate the school with. After school on Wednesday, the Student Council and friends hung up the decorations around the main entrance. We absolutely loved seeing all the unique creations that each student had made and got us in the holiday spirit right before break. We had originally planned to hand out candy cans and hot chocolate on the Friday before break, but we got a snow day that everyone was very excited about. So, instead, Thomas PTSA rescheduled Cocoa and Kindness to last Friday on January 6th. It was a great way to greet the students as they entered the school. Thank you to our parent volunteers and Superintendent Neenan for being our guest leader...server, excuse me. This past week, we welcomed our eighth graders to Thomas during the day where they got to tour the school and learn about high school. They visited the elective classrooms so that they could choose what special they would like to participate in next year. We cannot wait to welcome the future freshmen at Thomas next year. This year's Spring Musical is Freaky Friday and the cast list has just been announced. Congratulations to everyone involved and we cannot wait to see the show. Winter sports are underway with the girls' basketball team winning against Bradport as well as our boys' team in Hilton this weekend. Our boys' swim team beat Penfield last Tuesday and our hockey team faces crosstown rivals tonight at 7:00. Throughout the week, the boys have been raising money and making lanterns to help find a cure for cancer. Good luck to our boys as they take on Schrader tonight.
Titan Service Scholars has been very busy with many passive upcoming events. We celebrated the holidays with our very own Jingle and Mingle fundraiser in support of our upcoming international service project to the Dominican Republic to help needy families. It was a huge success and I absolutely love seeing some of our Board of Education members there. It meant so much to us for everyone who came and supported our project. Thursday, the 22nd, our Service Scholar leaders went on a bright and early service trip to the city of Rochester with the Open Door Mission. We planned and prepared breakfast for the homeless that were staying with the Open Door Mission. It was Mr. Whedor's first service project with us and we are so excited to have him join more in the future. Along with making breakfast, we also made handmade cards to give out to each individual with their meal. Handing out the cards and talking to individuals was the most impactful part of the project. We're excited to bring this back to everyone where we will assist in the PBE and J factory to make sandwiches for people in need. Titan Service Scholars are attending and volunteering at Night to Shine, which is a prom for individuals with special needs. We had our first training last week and we're all super excited for February 19th for the dance and to help individuals shine on their special night. We worked with Rochester Refugee Settlement Services to welcome a group of Afghan migrants and help them teach and learn about American culture. We each worked with different ages of kids and planned games based off Rochester to teach them about our community. The coolest part was getting to meet the House of Representative Joe Morelli and getting to talk to him about Titan Service Scholars and our work. They loved having us so much, so we're invited back on February 4th to work with Mary Place Refugee Empowerment Event to assist Somali women in learning about American culture and providing similar services and games to the children who are attending as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Joan.
I just took like four pages out. They do, they deliver it much better than I do.
They're so good.
Thank you, ladies. All right. Happy, healthy New Year. It is the second week, I'm used to being here the first week, but it is the third week, oh my goodness. All right. Happy holidays to everybody and Happy New Year. Of course, safety first, because we always going to say safety first, that's for our students. And TJ Milliman, boy, do we appreciate his diligence with all of you and your ongoing communications. Our elementary schools, our science fairs, our family nights, our book fairs, they're live, they're active. It still, it does, it brings goosebumps. A year ago, we were still in masks and now there's a lot more going on and people are moving about freely, even though, a little bit more freely, even though we have all our same concerns going on. We are maneuvering it just well. Both our Plank South and our Plank North are building upon what we have learned from the science of reading and they are exchanging and learning new ideas. I hope to bring some props next time. People in need of kindness, Willink started their pantry. They've been working on this project for a while. And WTA members Mary Hurley and Julie Russo-Russi have started the pantry for Willink. It encompasses things that kids can take home as well as have at school when that need arises. Not only just for them, but their siblings, some of them go home and they need to make some peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, some mac and cheese, some hygiene items, and those things are now there and students can grab them and not worry about needing mom or dad to stop at the store, whatever their circumstance. We all know people are in need. In all our buildings, work is displayed, but in our libraries, it is amazing. As our liaisons have mentioned, at the high school, students are getting ready to pick schedule and courses for next year. And teachers, man, they, some of them look like they're five years old again, teaching about, you know, just preaching, because they do, they still, whether they've been teaching it for five years, 10 years, 20 years, they're passionate about their field, they're passionate about what they teach, and they want to convince students, it's not just seven classes, you have some opportunities. And it might look overwhelming to some students and some adults, but as Mr. Whedor does, he always gets them there and so does everybody else on the team and collaborate. It's good to have them right behind me, nowhere he is. Never gets old. So there's our Titan Day, took that from ya. But up close and personal, although some might find that overwhelming, we do, we have a lot of fun with it. And we know that there's a lot of mornings or late nights that go into that planning, so we really appreciate all the members across bargaining units across the district that are working on those pieces. We have field trips, two very different but equally important field trips, from our oldest to our juniors and seniors who go on field trips in business. And although it seems odd, they go downtown, support local businesses, they might be at some accounting firms where they get to meet some people who, two, three years go by and all of a sudden, they're interning there. And then two, three more years go by and students that Coach Salvaggio, Coach Costanza, Janine Perrin used to have in front of them are now employers, employees at these downtown accounting firms. It's pretty cool. Or field trips where you simply want to get out and go bowling for two hours and it looks to be easy, but between the paperwork that somebody used to fill out next to you. It's Colleen. And other things that were done. It's not as easy and these trips are important and they're important to have and plan, and the only day the bowling alley is open early is Wednesdays. But they were fabulous and it was a great trip for all to have. Our retirees, they're on the top of the list for our sublists and we have to continue to just keep saying thank you. They keep showing up. I think their trips to North Carolina, Myrtle Beach, Florida, Out West, I do, I think their trips get shorter and shorter. They leave later, they come home earlier. So, big, big thank you to them. EDI, Candace Lucas, Dr. Charwell, behind me, amazing people to have on our teams. Just as our standard base grading has a Google Classroom, so does our EDI where we share resources, we share lessons, whether it's across bargaining units, across district, across grade levels, we put our resources there. WTA cares, near and dear to our heart. We know Colleen used to be an enormous contributor in donating towards that Special Olympics that's coming up and right now our members, they're arguing, are they going to their neck, they're going to their waist, or just their knees? Think some people are going to dunk. Let's hope for that success and there will be donations in her name. Director of Family Engagement and Inclusivity, it's Thursday night, is Dr. Charwell's going to talk. WTA always supports and hopefully some of us will be able to be there within that third week in January. To all of you, wish you health and kindness and joy.
Same to you, Joanie. Happy New Year.
That brings us to instructional reports with our campus news.
All right. Blaine, do you want to come up now? You can come up and sit with them and have all three of you up here at once.
Come on up.
Come on up. All right, and I'll begin as the three of you are coming up to sit down and find your name tags there. And I first want to begin my report tonight with an invitation to our One Webster Community to complete an online thought exchange about budget planning for the 2022-2023 school year. You may remember that Thought Exchange is a collaborative online discussion platform that the district uses to gain insights and feedback from the community as we make decisions that impact everyone, including a proposed budget for next year. Participation is voluntary and while one's thoughts are shared, one's identity is kept confidential. All participants may also view any objectively and objectively rate others' feedback, which is the important part of that tool. The Budget Planning Thought Exchange does close on Tuesday, January 31st, so please visit our website's news story at websterschools.org to complete it. And we are thankful for our community's ongoing feedback and we did this, this is the second year doing this now. Mr. Freeman oversees this and it was a huge success last year and we're, you know, on our way this year as well, so thank you very much. All right, and now I am going to introduce our three special guests. I'm going to start out with Mr. Blaine Cunningham, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Glenn Whedore, our Senior High School Principal at Thomas, and Dr. Christine Case, who is our Principal at State Road. And Christine, I think you are actually going to start with it for us today.
I am, and let's hope that I can do this correctly.
Sounds good, and thank you guys for being here.
See, I already messed it up here. Well, good evening and Happy New Year. As Mr. Neenan said, I'm Dr. Christine Case, the very proud principal of State Road Elementary School. And it's my pleasure to be here with you this evening to share just a few of the many great things that are going on in our schools. So with our themes of balance together and being champions of education, all of these things continue to be evident in all of the work that we do. When we think of balance, our students have been very busy setting goals for the new year. They've been learning what a resolution is, how to write a goal, but more importantly, how to attain the goals that they have set. Our friends at Clem South have encouraged families to be part of a letter-writing campaign that they have. I didn't know that it was Universal Letter Writing Week. And the theme for these letters is gratitude and it's a great way to start the new year. I'm a little happy with the mouse here. In terms of together, many of our fifth grade students have been on a challenger mission and students apply for and are selected for a specific job, but they have to learn to work together in order to accomplish a successful space mission. Our students are also working together and using technology to advance learning. The addition of the Encore Tosa's at the elementary level has increased and enhanced engagement with the digital literacy standards. I was watching some first graders today at the end of the day program the little B-bots, they're called, and it looks like a little B, and they had to move it forward, they had to program it to move forward and turn and go around. And to watch six and seven-year-olds do this was truly amazing and they were fabulous. Absolutely loved it. And then in terms of being champions of education, our staff, including our administrators, have been busy attending professional learning to deepen our knowledge, particularly in the area of literacy. Many of our elementary teachers have attended the Letters Training and Letters stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. And it has been great to see the staff go and come back and immediately implement their learning in the classroom and the difference that it has made for our students. The feedback has been positive and overwhelming. And thank you to Dr. Francine Leggett for organizing all that. It's been an invaluable experience.
Before you go, just really quick too, the Challenger, just so anybody...
Yes.
It used to be at the Planetarium, but about four years ago, I think, they made the change and now it is over at the Kodak Center.
Yes.
Which is where we all were for Opening Day. That's actually where it's located now for the county.
Yes, it's fabulous. The kids, they were amazing and they were so excited when they came back.
It was also a great opportunity for the Challenger staff to rejuvenate the entire program, which has been fun to watch.
Glad to be back to that, thank you.
Yeah, exactly, thanks. All right, Mr. Whedor.
Well, good evening, everybody, members of the Board of Education, and on behalf of the secondary admin teams, I would like to wish you all Happy New Year. Oops, this is very sensitive. I thought it was Christine. Apparently, Christine, a lesson from her. Although it is cold and dark outside, our schools are busier than ever as we head into the second half of the school year. I'm going to warn you, the students and Ms. Bardanas stole a lot of my thunder, but the biggest thing we have going on right now at the high school is, of course, course selection for the 23-24 school year. And of course, when we have course requests, that means it's time for Titan Night and Warrior Night. This is, this was the first in-person Titan Night and Warrior Night since January of 2020, which is hard to believe. And we had a packed house, I know with Thomas, we had a packed house last Monday. So after a brief overview with the auditorium, we, students and parents were let loose in the school to ask questions of all of our curriculum directors and elective teachers about core subjects as well as business, music, art, and technology. So I have a few photos here, here's the autolab at, whoops, that's really sensitive, at Thomas.
Keep it a center toes.
There's one of our new music teachers talking to a group of parents. And there's our art department, wow. So accompanying the evening event, both high schools also hosted all eighth graders for a portion of the day last week. So there's some students, some Willink students over in Ms. Morrell's room in the art wing at Thomas. So Titan Day and Warrior Day have evolved over the last decade and it's a great way for our incoming Titans and Warriors to get a real feel for the high school and to put them in a good position to make decisions about next year. So there's some students at Schrader and there's a business class at Schrader, I believe, or not class. Willink has some very exciting news. I know they mentioned earlier that Schrader's Media Center has done, Willink's has also done. So they're moving back into their newly renovated space and as you can see, the empty shelves and all the boxes, the volume of work that that's going to be for that crew over there at Willink. But I can tell you that as the principal of a building where we just recently had ours done a couple of years ago, it becomes the hub of your school and it's just used constantly by staff and students and everybody in the building. So it's an exciting time for our schools of getting those new centers. At Spry, Mr. Bear reports that students are busy with winter concerts and some fun learning square dancing and phys ed classes. And at the Goal Program, 10th grade students helped UPK students make gingerbread houses and through generous donations from whimsies and hagadorns in Webster, each Goal student received a bag of goodies and some of the gifts for them, some gifts were given to family and friends as well as food and candy. And lastly, coming up this Friday, we have some very active PTSAs at the high schools. So this Friday, we're doing flapjacks and lumberjacks. So pancakes are on the menu in the lunchroom and students are encouraged to wear any and all flannel clothing to school. And the students with the most spirit will get some Dunkin' Donut munchkins. So that's it for me. And again, Happy New Year and thanks for all the support you give to our schools.
Thanks, Blaine.
Mr. Whedor, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
About the autolab. When we toured Monroe, both these one, they have a pretty extensive one, so how does ours compare to what they have?
It's comparable, very comparable, yes.
So students can go to one or the other? Or would they start...
The EMCC programs do offer the advanced, some of the advanced work that we don't. So they have dual enrollment options that we don't have right now.
Great, thank you.
And Thomas did a fantastic job with the ninth graders. You know, hearing the conversation, I think it was wonderful that you talked about how that balance between their, what they're taking and also their study time and their that extra time that they get. Because when we talked to some of the high schoolers that have already graduated, Thomas, you know, they talked about that as well, like evening out their course load a little bit more if they were going to go back to an eighth grader and give them that feedback. So I thought that was great. The teachers were super, the teachers and the administration that was there to help lead those classes were really engaged, they were fantastic with answering questions. And I thought it was great that they were in the different classrooms because parents really did have a lot of questions, even about what kind of business, you know, business classes they were going to take. They talked about, you talked about the dual enrollment and then they reiterated that in the business class, and I think that's really important because I see so many parents that don't understand what the dual enrollment is and that they can get college credits for that. So I was really, really happy to see that and it was so good to see everybody together and getting ready for next year. They're all excited, so Thomas did a fantastic job with that. And I'm so happy to see the professional development, especially on the Letters, because we've learned so much about that. So it's so good to see, you know, staff learning that and then coming right back and implementing that with students. It was awesome to see that. Yeah, I'm really excited about that. And I also just want to thank all the local businesses, like they did there where they give those care packages. It's really wonderful because they donate, these companies will donate little gift packages for Goal students and having them be able to do that for us is really nice. So it's, just to give a shout out to them for doing that for us.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Real happy tonight to give the board a overview of the, some of the new and exciting things that are happening in our Facilities Department. As you know, with this cold and flu season, our custodial staff is working diligently, you know, very, very hard to keep the sickness and illness down in our schools through the cold, flu, and COVID season. Once again, focusing really mainly on high contact area and high use areas. I think overall with our attendance, we've been really, really successful with that, so kudos to those individuals. Tying into that right now, if you go back a year ago, just to update the board right now, when it comes to hand sanitizer, microfiber, and disinfectant, there are really no supply chain issues. Wish I could say the same thing when it comes to construction materials, but you know, this is most important as we move forward for our healthy school buildings. Our Preventive Maintenance Program and also our HVAC departments have been working very hard through the process, what they're doing with the potential flu, cold, and COVID. They really focus on air filtration and air exchanges, so we've got a real talented group that knows what they're doing and actually with our energy management system can track all these things to reassure that, once again, the air in the classrooms are being exchanged to help reduce sickness. In helping with that, we also just implemented a new work order system, it's called Master Library. What this program does, it's one platform that our preventative maintenance, our...
What this program does, it's one platform that our preventive maintenance, our general maintenance, any department can go and track and communicate with the individual who put the work order in to give them updates. And then secondly, also that platform ties into our building use schedules. So we can more efficiently plan and program our work. So we had work order systems before, but this is the first platform that we were able to tie all that in with help of Brian Zerman, the technology department are off and running. It's going quite well and got a lot of positive feedback with that. In regards to cleaning efficiencies, as you know, sometimes posting positions, not a lot of people applying for positions, though we're in pretty good shape right now. Over the past calendar year, we introduced orbital scrubbers. These scrubbers can not only do general cleaning at night for the hallways, but come summertime and project time, this orbital machine can scrub the floor where generally it takes two to three employees to accomplish that task. These machines put the water down, they scrub and pick it up all in one, you know, just using one employee. But the really neat thing about this is that it really provides a green solution. We're not using as much chemical, we're not using as much stripper, and also we're using less water. So not only safer in the hallways when you use it in the summer, because we have a lot of programs and things of that nature, but once again, a very efficient machine, especially construction season. We try to give people as much time in the building to complete tasks when you've got to turn a building around. These machines definitely have really helped and allows the other employees to also to put classrooms back, which once again, it's a very efficient process. As of right now, we did, I'm going to say anybody that was touched construction wise. So like Schrader, Plank North, Plank South, anybody who had major construction with the LED lighting and that, Thomas, the year before, we bought them. So the majority of them right now, I probably, 75% of the buildings have them. They have other machines, but the price point, we wanted to make sure that we could get, you know, the buyback when we did that, so. In regards to chemical efficiency, I don't know if you all have been able to go to the Schrader gym. This year, we introduced district ride along with those orbital machines, new water-based floor finishes. The great thing about that is it's not only low VOC, volatile organic compounds where the odor is reduced, but there are also, there's a labor savings because we can use those orbital machines that I spoke of previously. But the great thing, this being a water-based system, instead of waiting 72 hours to open the gym back open, we can get on them in like 48 hours. And once again, finding it to be a very durable product. So we tied, incorporated those two processes together and we're getting good results with that. Probably the best slide that I like here tonight is in regards to energy efficiency. As you know that we did new ceilings and LED lighting at State Road and at Clem North. What we did is we compared September last year to September this year. And between the two buildings, we averaged a 32% kilowatt reduction by doing that process of doing LEDs in the cafeterias, the hallways, and also in the classrooms. So that's really good news. So not only that you get, you know, a really nice bright classroom where you can tone down your lights if needed. Yeah, the kilowatt savings is the most exciting thing of this. So hoping to continue that process as we go through our next projects. And finally, the last slide here, just to let the board know that as of December 22nd of this year, of last year, I'm sorry, 2020, of 2022, New York State Department of Health has lowered the parts per billion allowed in lead when it comes to potable water. When I first started 25 years ago, it was 20 parts per billion. Probably two years ago, they went down to 15 parts per billion. As of 2026, it's now going to be five parts per billion. Now, the good news is, is through the construction projects, we've been replacing a lot of faucets. And with that, taking out a lot of the older fixtures and some of the joints that need to be, to remediate the issues to get them down to the 15. Some of our newer testing now is below five, which is great. But what we're going to do is through this next 2026, so as the next three years, we will tack to remediate these issues, anything above five parts per billion. So all the results are up on the website. And like I said, we got through the first phase and then the second phase. And we'll get through this also as our plumbers and actually the whole team tackles this whole, you know, ongoing, ongoing goal. So that's where we're at generally as a maintenance department. So with this new action level, we'll definitely do everything we can do to get there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, all three of you. As I look at all three of you too, I just can't help but think about the amazing leadership that we have. All three of you have double-digit leadership years in our district. You're three of our veteran leaders and we really do appreciate the leadership that you guys bring and offer us to as a district. I also want to make one quick note that Blaine, you did a really nice job with that mouse and you didn't have any problems.
I said that, I took a clap, I go, how come you still have? I didn't know you could.
No, in all seriousness.
I learned something.
We do really, really appreciate it. And I just got one last thing for finishing up campus news. I want to extend an invitation, like we've already heard at least a couple of times tonight, but certainly to our district families, to attend our Family Engagement Roundtable this Thursday from January 19th, on January 19th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., right here in the second floor PDC. It's Brye Middle School. Please join us for the discussion with Dr. C, Dr. Chawell, who's with us tonight. Our Webster CSD Executive Director of Family and Student Services and Inclusivity. Also Janine Sanger from Webster Health and Education Network, their Executive Director, as well as a parent and a student from our district that will join that roundtable. So please come out if you can in person or watch it live stream on the website. You may also submit questions to the panel in advance of Thursday's roundtable and find out more information by visiting the district's website, newsstory@websterschools.org. That ends my report for the evening and again, thank you all for being here to help us.
Thank you.
All righty, board business. First item for board business tonight is actually, we had a little package we put together for December for opening, the Thomas Faculty Bathrooms. And what we're asking with the resolution tonight is for the board to officially reject all the bids that we received. There was not a great turnout. One of the low bidders actually withdrew their bid within the required timeframe. And then one bid we opened was actually blanked, so it only left two bids on one of the contracts. And so when we took a step back and looked at everything, really, we thought it would be best, take this package, add it to the next bid that we do, see if we can garner some more interest, hopefully help with pricing and get more contractors out there to bid, which would be advantageous for us.
Are there any questions? Makes sense.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the resolution rejecting bids for faculty bathroom renovation at Thomas High School as part of the 2018 69 and a half million capital project?
So moved.
So moved, Linda, second, Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes 6-0. Bosie's leave.
Next up is our annual technology lease approval. And we will occasionally do a lease that's off-cycle towards May or June, but this is our normal every three-year lease cycle. So you have the equipment list that we're purchasing. We do this through Bosie's to get the Bosie's aid. They actually handle all the financing for the district. They do all the legwork for us. All we do is make the three payments once every year and get all the equipment at once. It's a nice little program we started eight years ago. And so this is the original, the third renewal of the second phase that we originally started. So it's been a while that we've been doing this, so.
Brian?
Question?
Yeah.
The interest charge is 110,000. If we pay that upfront, can we avoid paying the finance charge?
So the finance charge is part of the Bosie's process. Anytime we lease, Bosie's incurs the finance charge for us and we pay that over the three years as well. It's a set payment, it's very scheduled for state approval. So we couldn't step outside of the lease and pay anything off early. We get aid on the finance charging as well.
So is it a fixed bid then, so that if interest rates go up?
It's fixed, based on, through the bank, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, motion to approve the instructional technology Bosie's lease for 2022, 2023. Shanna, so moved, second, Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes 6-0. Approval of federal single audit and corrective action.
So next up, there is no corrective action. This was our federal audit. All of our federal programs were audited like every year, but this year it was focused on the stimulus, the ARP and the coronavirus response relief. Auditors focused on that and the UPK as well, because we had the additional funding there. And there were no current findings, everything we spend in these grants was appropriate and they so deemed as part of this report.
Questions on that? It's pretty good, all right. Motion to approve the federal single audit and corrective actions. So moved Jen, second, Linda, all in favor? Aye. All right, that's 6-0. Last one, right?
Last one, yep. The Extracurricular Activities Fund, which is always fun, that gets to get audited. If you ever have time and want to watch a movie, I believe it's on Amazon Prime, it's called Bad Education.
I saw that.
With Hugh Jackman.
Yes.
It tells us, it's a sensationalized version, but tells the story of why we have our extracurricular audit, because that's where a lot of the fraud started in that school district on Long Island. And it does a nice job explaining, doesn't go into too much technical detail, but one of the reasons why we have our extra class audited, it's part of the five-point program, is because of that movie. Our, you know, it's student engagement, it's student involvement. There's turnover every year with different advisors, different kids. They have to be involved. So it's always a learning curve, so we're always going to have little things here and there, deposits and profit and loss. So overall, this is a very good extracurricular, only finding five things between the four schools. And so we have our corrective actions there laid out. We'll submit that to the controller in the state.
So Brian, is there a way we could be proactive, either through the advisors? I understand there's turnover and I, it's only five findings, but it seems like we have five findings every year.
We will, yeah. It's about, yeah, that's average. I mean, there's, I've never worked in a district where ever been able to eliminate extracurricular findings. We have everything laid out, but it's just dealing with, it's the student learning curve. They have to be involved in every aspect of every club, from a president, vice president, secretary, treasurer. And, you know, they forget things, they'll forget a deposit slip. And, you know, that's, it's going to happen, especially with the volume we do between the four secondary buildings.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, with that, motion to approve the Extracurricular Accounts Audit and Corrective Action Plan. So moved Shanna, second, Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 6-0. Moving on to school liaison reports. And once again, we get such a good detailed description from the students and also from our other presenters, from Schrader's perspective, and really surprised I don't have much to add, or from Central's. I don't know if anyone does, please just go for it, if you have anything from any of your buildings. I know it's early in January still, maybe we haven't had a ton of meetings, but if you have anything, go for it.
The only thing that I have is the nominations for the Oak Tree Award, which is the award that's given out to a secondary and an elementary school teacher every year. Those nomination, the nomination date is January 31st. So any family that would like to nominate a teacher, all of the information is on the PTSA website. So that's really important.
The big thing over at Clem South is they're going to be trying one of the building-wide fundraisers this year. They're going to be doing a big dance, but it's a series of lessons regarding character leading up to that event. So it's the first time Clem South's doing it, so it's going to be really exciting to see how much fun it's going to be for the families and the kids, especially during the school day. Because most of it takes place while people are in school, so.
That's cool.
Yeah, so it's a big part of their schedule, so.
Yeah.
And State Road meets tomorrow.
Yes, okay. You good? Yeah, okay. Monroe County School Boards Association. I'll just put in a brief plug, last week we had our mid-year board retreat. Amy Thomas, the Executive Director from MCSBA, came and I thought it was a great night. It was four hours, we got a lot of work done, a lot of great teamwork, learning. So that was very helpful. So I do want to put in a plug and a big thank you to Amy, because we got a lot of good feedback from each other and from Amy and our work is moving forward in a positive direction, which is awesome. She did, she, I agree, she did a great job. I will be sharing her write-up with you, I wanted to get through tonight's meeting, so expect that email coming. But yeah, I thought it was great, yeah, it was great. Legislative.
The thing is coming up on February 4th is the legislative breakfast. Pretty much the next, the next meeting is right before that, just to be discussing what's going to be going on or going to discuss the big issues based on our district's area.
I know there were some redistricting, so I'm probably going to butcher his name, but Manktalo, I believe, is now. And he's reached out to us, so hopefully that'll be a nice partnership moving forward as well.
So I know if you're still registered, so I can actually attend now.
Oh, you can go, okay. I'm still on the fence, but we shall see. If anyone wants to go, yes, feel free to register. Labor relations.
Meeting is tomorrow.
Is anybody going to go on the bus to Albany?
They changed the dates to that, didn't they?
Yes.
I don't know if that helped, it probably doesn't help you anyways.
Okay, no. It's okay. They moved it two days later. I want to say it's a Wednesday and a Thursday now, so if anybody wants to go.
So that is if anyone wants to go.
I definitely will not be able to.
Okay, okay. And it's not, there's a lot, there's usually a lot of people that go, so we don't have to.
And they always go on like the position paper, so it's all, it's a common purpose, so.
Yep, it's, but if anybody's interested, but still, but sorry. No, you're good. Information exchange.
And I went to the information exchange this time. And I mean, yeah, Carol, but she's not here tonight. So it was an opportunity for us to actually practice speaking with our legislators. So it was a mock breakfast, if you will, for us to talk about some of those positions, bring up some of those positions. And then there was just a few people that kind of fell into the role of actor and actress. And they did a great job of staying in character and, you know, just kind of trying to make sure that we were all being clear with our points and whatnot too. So that was great, I thought it was helpful. And the buzzer rang and it was like 110, which meetings don't always necessarily go that long and people were just really engaged, so I think it was helpful.
Executive, we don't meet till February 15th, so there's no real update there. Moving on to district, standing district committees, audit.
Nothing on audit. Brian, I'll schedule that next, next meeting. And these two reports were outside of the audit committee, but we have copies of them.
Yeah. Policy, those of us on the committee check your email, I know we're trying to get a date together, hopefully sometime soon. We'll look at the next chunk of policies from Erie One Bosie's that we're going to look at next. So that should be in the next couple of weeks. Budget advisory, Brian mentioned earlier, the thought exchange, it's on the website. So the more that we have people fill that out and interact with all the different comments, the more information we have moving forward for budget season. That was really helpful last year, so please go on and fill that out if you can.
And I do want to reiterate that, so we'll talk about those at our PTSA meetings, because we really used that information to help frame that budget last year. So when you put comments and then you're talking about what's important to you, whether it's class size or education, there's, those things, we see them and then they go into the budget. So I definitely recommend that people fill that out. It's a way for you to have a voice without having to physically go anywhere. So it's really, it's the laziest way that I can give input, which I appreciate.
And it's fun.
Yeah.
And I do know that Brian is planning on bringing the results to the board in the February regular meeting.
Yeah. I was already excited to go on there and fill it out even from, you know, a parent perspective and see people's feedback already. You know, that's as nice as you can see right away what people are talking about. And sometimes it's frustrating, because sometimes it may have nothing to do with the budget. But it is still really good to see what's, what's important to people out there. Otherwise, we wouldn't know.
And you can rank those comments as well.
Yeah.
Which is kind of nice, so it's very interactive, it does give a lot of improvement. Which is kind of nice, so it's very interactive, it does give a lot of information.
Yeah, opens up to a lot of people that wouldn't normally give a voice into the budget.
Strategic Planning. Yeah, you got it.
So we had a mid-December meeting, and the focus of that meeting was on Goal Number One, which is academic programs and student achievement. In particular, we are poking at the question, how well-prepared are our students to pursue whatever they choose to upon graduation? And if Mr. Weider was here, we could ask him that question, but he left. So we have two plans to go out and benchmark with some of our recent graduates who are now college freshmen, either at MCC or at Propport, we're looking at setting those up. And then also those who have chosen not to go to college but are pursuing a career in skilled trades, also to talk to them. With the caveat, how well were they prepared both academically and socially and emotionally from Webster for what came next? So in the process of setting those meetings up.
One of them happened, yep.
Yeah, we did actually have the one with the students, and it was wonderful to talk to them. So we had four students that physically came in and sat down and talked with us about their experience. They were, what they had moved, their careers were, or their majors were engineering and packaging sciences, there was aerospace engineering, there was medical,
Biomedical.
Biomedical engineering, there was geography and sustainability. And it was great, because it was tough for them too, because they were in COVID. But what I loved to hear was that their feedback was really positive, they did feel they were prepared for college. They, I mean, and it was, what I really applauded Larry on was they were really brave questions. You know, I mean, they asked like, you know, teachers in high school help you a lot, so how did you feel in college? You know, going from professors that really aren't going to make that, that are going to do that differently. And how did you feel like your course selection was? What could we offer in courses that would have better prepared you? Would it be better to take classes that range that are multi-grade, so students from ninth all the way to 12th grade? So you have an older, you know, you develop those relationships with someone who can help you have those conversations. And it was so good to hear their feedback and also to know that we can take some of those changes and move forward. What would they have done differently as an eighth grader? And I loved that they really did feel prepared by their, by their education here, even in a year that was tough with COVID, because they said they got to college and the professors really didn't care that COVID was, you know, that they had two days a week. Like, the expectation was there that you're going to, that you're right at full par. And so even with that, you know, it's a struggle, it was still a struggle for them, but they still felt like they were prepared. And so I loved talking to them, I thought that was a great, I'd love to get more in, yeah. It was really wonderful to get that feedback.
That's enough knowledge for us.
Yeah.
School Community. But they are partnering Thursday night.
Yes, when, yes, sorry, I felt like that was.
No, it is, it's been said a million times now, but they are partnering Thursday night, yes, for around people, awesome. That pretty much brings us to our Consent Agenda. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to look at, it's our minutes, it's personnel, there's a few bids in there. Anyone has any questions? The board gets this ahead of time, so everyone's hopefully had a chance to look at it, ask any questions, and then we approve it all at once, so. That being said, our motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Sam is unmoved, Mike second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that brings us to our public speaking. I believe we have one speaker. So again, this is our opportunity to, we had two, but we have one now, the other one couldn't make it. So this is our chance to listen, so come on up, and Cindy will introduce you.
Stephanie Conley, right to this table? Right here? Yep. Hi, everyone. Hi. This is not intimidating at all. Don't be. My name is Stephanie Conley. I'm a Webster resident and a parent of a Clem South fifth grader, she happens to be here. I'm here today to speak about the relationship with health, food service, and how it is impacting my child as well as others. As a parent of a child with a chronic illness, of course, my focus is on her health, well-being, and education. However, I'm not here just for her, I'm here for all Webster students. My child was diagnosed with type 1 diabetes when she was just 17 months old. Many people believe that diabetes is caused by eating too much sugar or being overweight, and I can assure you that it's not the case with type 1 diabetes. It's an autoimmune disease, much like celiac, lupus, MS. The only treatment for this condition is artificial insulin. So why is this important to food service for our children? Well, everything we consume has some sort of nutritional value, and in the case of diabetics of all types, the amount of carbohydrate in a food item is vital to knowing how much insulin to give. Without this knowledge, we play Russian roulette with the lives of our children. It's my understanding, after contacting the Food Service Department, that nutritional values were lost this past summer. And there was an effort to recreate a nutritional value list for families. Please understand that this effort is appreciated. However, there are many flaws in this system, and it's imperative they are addressed. Incorrect or missing values are unacceptable. Here's an example. The Nutritional Calculator on Webster's Food Service page lists fresh fruit daily. Each day, that fresh fruit is 21 grams of carbohydrate. There is no variation, yet there's vast variation in actual carbohydrate values for an orange versus an apple versus a banana. What fresh fruit is being offered to children each day? Why is that information not readily accessible to a parent or a school nurse without the nurse leaving the health office and tracking it down? Due to inaccuracies and missing information, our nurses and cafeteria personnel are spending significant amounts of time hunting down information in order to accurately dose children who need their medicine, insulin. Children need food to live and to learn, and those with type 1 diabetes need insulin to process that food. Nutritional values are a part of the prescription. Without them, they may experience high or low blood sugar, which makes accessing education difficult and at times impossible. Therefore, nutritional inaccuracies cause inequality in the access to education, of which Webster Schools is legally required to provide. Not only am I concerned about the lack of information available to myself, nurses, and cafeteria staff, I'm concerned about the cavalier attitude when it has been brought to the attention of those who have the power to make a change. At the beginning, I told you I was not here just for my child, and I'm not. If we apply the CDC percentage to the Webster student population, we can assume approximately 30 children are affected by type 1 diabetes out of just over 8,000 in this district. Do we really want our nurses spending a large part of their time chasing down information that should be readily available for such a small population? I can't imagine that when food service places orders for that, for food, that nutritional values are not provided for every single thing. So why is that information not kept in a database that is accessible by the very people that are using it to treat our children? Students with celiac or gluten sensitivity need to know what foods contain wheat. Students allergic to peanuts need to know if anything contains or was manufactured with nuts. And students with diabetes need to know carbohydrate counts on individual food items. That said, every child in this district deserves to be able to eat a nutrition, a nutritious and safe meal at school. Even those who do not have food-related medical conditions deserve to be provided with proper nutritional information, which is why the first food label requirements were finalized in 1973. It's been 50 years since then, so I have absolutely no doubt that food service has access to this information from their vendors and can do better.
Stephanie, thank you, that was good information, if you're looking into that, thank you. Don't believe we have any other speakers, correct? With that, so our next meeting is a workshop, February 7th. We're going to have Dr. Chawell here back, talking to us about our work with diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then on the 14th, we have a regular business meeting. Don't remember the topic of that one, I don't think about it, but.
I think it's food service.
Food service, that's right, so there, okay, see? Thank you. Yes, it is food service, that's right. Everything else, I think we've been reminded of the roundtable and filling out the budget advisory, so I don't have any other updates. So with that, it's 7 o'clock, and I believe I can have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved, Charlie, second. Shanna, all in favor? Aye, yes, go to your chorus concert, please.